I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We good? We're good. Okay. This is an organization meeting for the Bayonne Board of Education for 2018. Each of you is a trustee. We have no officers as yet and will not have until the legal election, required election, which will enable us to be legally organized. This is also a regular meeting. There will be some resolutions to dispose of after the election of officers. I will act as presiding officer pro term until the president has been duly elected. For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:33 PM, the ninth day of January. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. As you all know, our original meeting was scheduled for Thursday, January 4th. Due to the blizzard conditions, most reorganizations meetings in the state were rescheduled and we decided to reschedule ours for tonight. The acting presiding officers, Dr. Gary Maida. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael Wonko, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary, Mr. Leo J. Smith, Jr., Assistant Superintendent for Business, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Mitchell Biscrow, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
President.
Trustee Broderick.
Here.
Trustee Cruden.
Here.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Finerty.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Velado.
Here.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
For the record, adequate written advance notice was given at least 48 hours, giving the time, date, and location of the meeting with the agenda and it was provided as follows. Original notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements. The Board Secretary sent the notice to the Jersey Journal and Bayonne Community News and notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Mr. Sloan. The change in date was on our website and it was posted on our website. Okay. So we'll start with some business. We'll start with communications. Do I have a motion to accept communications?
I will motion.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion and a second to accept communications. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Aye.
Trustee Desmond.
Aye.
Trustee Finerty.
Aye.
Trustee Munoz.
Aye.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Aye.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Next up, following along, is election of the Board of Education President and I will open up those procedures. A motion to open nominations for President of the Bayonne Board of Education.
Can I make that motion?
I'll second.
Can I nominate?
In a second. Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Desmond, seconded by trustee Cruden, to open nominations for President. I'll take a vote on that. Trustee Alonzo, yes or no?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Now, we'll have a motion to place into nomination for the position of President of the Bayonne Board of Education.
I'd like to make a motion to name, uh, doctor, Mr. Joseph Broderick as President.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second for trustee Broderick's name to be placed in nomination for position of President of the Bayonne Board of Education. I'll take a vote on that motion and second, trustee Alonzo.
I definitely look forward to working with you, so I vote yes.
Okay, we just a little louder into the microphones, please. Trustee Broderick.
Uh, yes, humbly yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Even though I've elevated you to Doctor Broderick, yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Most definitely, yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Great. Trustee Broderick, congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like you to move.
I'm gonna ask the trustee, everybody would bump down one.
You stay where you are, my friend.
My name is stay there.
Who's this?
I can't sit now. Thank you so much.
Now unfortunately, that was a little premature.
That's all right.
Because I have to have a motion to close nominations for position of President. Thank you.
I'll second.
And a second, I'll take a roll call on the closing. Trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee, uh, trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
And now we have a, is there a motion to elect Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education?
I move.
I second.
A second by Mr. Wilbeck. Motion to elect trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Congratulations. It was just the anticipation, I was just way ahead of myself. Mr. Broderick, would you like to say if you want?
Sure. Thank you. Basically, I just wanna thank the Board for having some confidence in me one more time. It's been a, we've gone through a lot of difficult times together and I really appreciate it. Sometimes people, if you do become President, you're the name they see or hear, but trust me when I tell you that it's actually, it's a group here and if it wasn't for the group, nothing can get done. These people come here every month and actually come here every week and sometimes every day to make very difficult, tough decisions that are sometimes very, very unpopular. So I give them all the credit in the world and I appreciate working with them and I thank them. One thing I can promise you, that the group here, when the decision is made, it's not just made, it's always looked at from all sides and we do always try to come up with what we think is the best possible answer possible. So once again, I just wanna thank everybody. While I have a moment, I'd like to congratulate all the new trustees, or, well, not all the new ones, Mr. Trustee Munoz, have a, you wanna say something?
Um, I just wanna say congratulations, President Broderick, and I would like to thank the Bayonne community for having faith in me and re-electing me to the Board. I look forward to serving the community for another three years and hopefully for many more years to come after that. So, thank you very much for your vote of confidence.
Trustee Alonzo, congratulations. Do you like to say something?
Thank you so much, President Broderick. Although I do have more of a prepared speech left in the back room, I would like to say thank you to everybody that voted for me and thank you for this Board for being open and very welcoming. And then, I did put some work into that, so I'm gonna ask that maybe I can reserve some of my time for, at the end, when I have my prepared.
Sure.
Thank you so much, President.
Trustee Velado? Oh, I gotta learn who everyone is.
Thank you, President Broderick. I'd just like to thank everyone who voted for me and trusted that I will, and entrusted their children's education to me. I will always have the children in front, in the front of my mind when making decisions. Thank you.
I just wanna say that I've worked with trustee Munoz for the last two years and I can tell you he's a dynamic person and comes up with tremendous ideas and is a hard worker. And I've spoken to trustees Alonzo and Velado a couple of times and I just know that they're gonna be excellent, excellent trustees. So, congratulations once again. Finally, I just wanted to say that I think we're looking forward, it's a new year, Happy New Year, everyone, that, you know, we're looking forward to a very, very good year. I think there's gonna be a lot of good things happening here at the Board. I think the students are gonna be the real ones who achieve and get the best out of this. I think we're gonna find administrators and teachers being utilized in more active ways, that they're gonna be a bigger part of our whole process. I think we're gonna take students and really do some wonderful things with them. I know we're looking at things like Free K through 2, the grade, second grade. We need to get those students. We have to get them to be liking school, loving school, knowing that an education is important. If we don't do that at that early age, we kinda lose them and I think so. I think we're gonna make some great strides in doing that. I think we're moving to a point of quicker intervention for students that we find out a struggle. We're not gonna wait now and find out in May that a student isn't doing well as soon as we see the first progress report. We know, teachers know this, we're gonna have programs that are gonna help these students. We wanna make sure that they get right back on task and give them whatever they need. Finally, I think we're gonna go stronger in the vocational section of the high school and even earlier, if we can talk to students, we're gonna try to work with the county on programs like that. I think it's important, and this goes towards our, the main issue of, there should be no student that graduates from Bayonne High School that doesn't have a plan or an opportunity to do something. The day of a student graduating with that piece of paper and then standing there wondering what they're gonna do has to end. Every student in this city should have a plan and an opportunity and that's what we need to provide and that's what we intend to do. So once again, thank you, everyone that voted for me and I appreciate it. I hope I can live up to it.
Okay, moving along, election for Board of Education Vice President. So we'll start with a motion to open nominations for Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Education.
I'll move. I'll second.
There's a motion from trustee Cruden. There's a second from trustee Desmond. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
So now we have a motion to place into nomination for the position of Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Education.
I nominate Dennis Wilbeck as Vice President.
I'll second.
So trustee Desmond and trustee Cruden move and second, trustee Wilbeck, VP of the Bayonne Board of Education. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Broderick.
I'm sorry, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Uh, Dr. Maida, always on my right, sorry, you're my right-hand man. It's gonna be good to have my left-side man back again, Mr. Wilbeck, so.
A motion.
I just said how nice you are.
You won't be sitting there, real soon.
You're moving under the bus, really, Chris.
A motion to close nominations for position of Vice President of the Bayonne Board.
I move.
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second to close nominations. Trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
So we have a motion to elect trustee Wilbeck for the position of Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Education and as still trustee Desmond on the move and trustee Cruden on the second. So on that motion and second, to elect Mr. Wilbeck for position of Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Education, trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
You look like you're just gonna have a.
Congratulations, Mr. Wilbeck.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Vice President Wilbeck, a few words?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, for the first time, we have a new year and we have a brand-new elected Board of Education that represents the families, the teachers, especially our children, and we have some of the brightest, the most intelligent leadership up here with Central Board of Education, with the people here sitting to my left, as well as the trustees and Secretary Maida who sits here in front of you as I speak. I'm honored and proud to be here. We will do everything in our power to make sure that the teachers, the students, and the families throughout the city of Bayonne get the best educational opportunities possible. Thank you. I am honored to be with this group.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have some business to take care of. We will start with our consent agenda. I'll remind the audience, you are allowed to ask questions. Please use a, use our cards. You have to put down your name, your address. If you're going to speak on a particular resolution, please put the resolution number. If you're gonna ask to speak at the open portion of the meeting, please put down the open portion and if you'd like to put something down on your question. Right now, I only have two questions, but I understand some people did walk in. If you'd like to fill one out, your.
It's on the table.
I will pick that up before we get to that. It's an open question? I'll grab that. So we'll start with our consent agenda. I'd like to read some of, some portions of the consent agenda into the record. All our resolutions are on the bulletin board. I'll start with A1 is our adoption of bylaws and policies for the year for the Bayonne Board of Education. Resolution A2 is our delegates to the New Jersey School Board for this year. It'll be trustee Alonzo and our alternate will be trustee Desmond. On resolution A3 is warrants for school monies. Resolution A4 is permission for payroll and signing of warrants and the signatures would be our President, Mr. Broderick, and our Vice President, Mr. Wilbeck. And I notice I will correct that typo that's in that resolution. A5 is our Hudson County School Board representatives. It'll be trustee Munoz and the alternate would be Vice President Wilbeck. A6 is our newspapers, the Jersey Journal and the Community News. A7, A7 is a list of our open workshops and regular meetings. The only change you'll see is the open workshops will be starting at 5:30 PM and not 5 o'clock. Our regular meetings will continue to be held at 7:30. And you'll see a list of all of those meetings and they will be posted not only on our website but in the newspaper. A8 is Board Ethics and School Training and there's that resolution and the packet that goes along with it. And then, if I could, with resolution A9 is for our preschool education expansion aid and you'll see a resolution for that accepting a grant. So we have a consent agenda of A1 through A9. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Vice President Wilbeck. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by trustee Cruden. So on that motion and second, on the consent agenda, trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick, congratulations. Congratulations. Vice President Wilbeck, a few words?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, for the first time, we have a new year and we have a brand-new elected Board of Education that represents the families, the teachers, especially our children, and we have some of the brightest, the most intelligent leadership up here with Central Board of Education, with the people here sitting to my left, as well as the trustees and Secretary Maida who sits here in front of you as I speak. I'm honored and proud to be here. We will do everything in our power to make sure that the teachers, the students, and the families throughout the city of Bayonne get the best educational opportunities possible. Thank you. I am honored to be with this group.
Okay, we have some business to take care of. We will start with our consent agenda. I'll remind the audience, you are allowed to ask questions. Please use a, use our cards. You have to put down your name, your address. If you're going to speak on a particular resolution, please put the resolution number. If you're gonna ask to speak at the open portion of the meeting, please put down the open portion and if you'd like to put something down on your question. Right now, I only have two questions, but I understand some people did walk in. If you'd like to fill one out, your.
It's on the table.
I will pick that up before we get to that. It's an open question? I'll grab that. So we'll start with our consent agenda. I'd like to read some of, some portions of the consent agenda into the record. All our resolutions are on the bulletin board. I'll start with A1 is our adoption of bylaws and policies for the year for the Bayonne Board of Education. Resolution A2 is our delegates to the New Jersey School Board for this year. It'll be trustee Alonzo and our alternate will be trustee Desmond. On resolution A3 is warrants for school monies. Resolution A4 is permission for payroll and signing of warrants and the signatures would be our President, Mr. Broderick, and our Vice President, Mr. Wilbeck. And I notice I will correct that typo that's in that resolution. A5 is our Hudson County School Board representatives. It'll be trustee Munoz and the alternate would be Vice President Wilbeck. A6 is our newspapers, the Jersey Journal and the Community News. A7, A7 is a list of our open workshops and regular meetings. The only change you'll see is the open workshops will be starting at 5:30 PM and not 5 o'clock. Our regular meetings will continue to be held at 7:30. And you'll see a list of all of those meetings and they will be posted not only on our website but in the newspaper. A8 is Board Ethics and School Training and there's that resolution and the packet that goes along with it. And then, if I could, with resolution A9 is for our preschool education expansion aid and you'll see a resolution for that accepting a grant. So we have a consent agenda of A1 through A9. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Vice President Wilbeck. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by trustee Cruden. So on that motion and second, on the consent agenda, trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes. Dr. Maida?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion? I see that our Bayonne High School Student Council representative is here. He did say we'd like to send this.
And I'll let him go first.
Okay.
Sure.
He has homework to do.
Great, especially before we get to the open questions. So let me just get his card. So at this time, we'll go out of order and we'll ask our student representative, Victor Lozaro, from Bayonne High School, to please address the Board.
Good evening, Board of Education Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Wonko, Assistant Superintendent Copaz, Dr. Degman, and Mrs. Smith. I'd like to wish all of you a Happy New Year and let's start 2018 with a great, with the right step. Tomorrow, student government will be heading to the College of New Jersey for the annual winter convention for the New Jersey Student Council Association. Students from all around the state will gather around, attend workshops, and exchange ideas for possible fundraisers for the school. Back in 2017 of December, the student government held their annual winter fest, which I can assure to you that it was a success. And as a reminder, all of our fundraisers being raised, sorry, all of our fundraisers and our funds as being raised are gonna be donated to our state charity, which is Grow a Row. Grow a Row is a nonprofit organization that grows fresh produce that is then donated to food pantries, soup kitchens, crisis centers, and food banks all over the state of New Jersey and beyond, and we're hoping for the continued support of our cause. Thank you.
Happy New Year, Victor. Great. Next up, we'll turn to our non-consent portion, starting with resolution B1. Whereas the Board of Education of the city of Bayonne, Hudson County, New Jersey is required to have an annual financial audit pursuant to NJSA 18A23 and it will require the assistance of a certified public accounting firm to accomplish this audit. Therefore be it resolved that HODUP and Morrison PA Certified Public Accountant and Registered School Accountant of New Jersey is hereby contracted to make the complete, to complete an annual audit and a single audit for the school district's account and financial transaction. This includes the cafeteria account, all public school accounts, as well as assistance with the DRTRS and the ASSA reporting review for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, ending June 30, 2018, in accordance and compliance with the provisions and requirements of Section NJSA 18A23, inclusive of the revised statute completion thereof for the sum of $59,000. Be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business School Business Administrator is authorized to request that the above-named firm, on a consultant basis, provide additional professional services as needed. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and second on resolution B1. Trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Aye.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo.
Do these two doctors get any other compensation?
Single medical benefits? I'm not sure.
Why are we giving, I don't understand why every year we give them single medical. This is a little side job for them. They're making $50,000 and almost $40,000. Are you paying their medical bills?
We'll check that, Mr. DeAngelo. I'm not 100% sure.
How did, then my question is, why did you pass it if you're not 100% sure?
Well, I'm sure of the salary, I'm just not sure of the benefit question. So I, we, we can look that up right now if we have to.
President Broderick, we should table this till that's answered.
Could we repeat, I think Sue was running late tonight catching up.
I agree.
We'll table it till it's answered, to everybody's satisfaction.
All right, can we do that?
Let's, let's reverse that. We'll table this for now until we get that answer.
You can go at the end.
You know what? We'll hold on B2 until Matt gets us that answer. Is that okay, Mr. DeAngelo?
Well, I'm gonna have the same question for all the other people that you're hiring. In other words, does the law firms get medical, does the architect?
No.
No, no, no.
No one in the RFPs gets anything other than.
The salary.
What's in the contract. No benefits.
So why are we giving it to the doctors?
Cause they're employees of the Board of Education.
Yeah, but.
Separate than an RFP, which is a consultant for the Board of Education. But why don't we wait and get that answer in a few minutes when Matt comes back in? I'll move along to B3. Whereas the Board of Education, city of Bayonne, Hudson County, New Jersey, deems it necessary to renew the services of Dr. Barry E. Davis, optometrist, for comprehensive eye exams for students in grades kindergarten, second, fourth, sixth, eighth, and 10th grades. Be it further resolved that any provisions incorporated in contracts entered into or to be entered into between the Board and organizations representing the various employee units, which are in conflict with the provisions and the rules and regulations of the school board policies, then and in that event, the provisions in the contract shall prevail. Do I have a motion?
I don't.
And a second?
Michael.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Michael Alonso.
Trustee Alonso.
B4?
Yes, I second.
I'm sorry. Okay, so that's a move and a second on B4. Trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
No.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
No.
Okay, B5, I will not read the whole resolution. Basically, all these resolutions, the language is the same. In this case, it's engineering services, and it's Neglia Engineering, and it's still January 4, 2018, to and including January 3, 2019. Is there a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
No.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
No.
B6, same language. This is legal services, special category, Accruzy, McDermott, Mastro, and Murphy, January 4, 2018, to and including January 3, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I will second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
No.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato.
No.
Trustee, I'm Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
One, Matt, do we have an answer on that question from Mr. DeAngelo in regards to the doctors?
Yes, both doctors are currently employee spouse health benefits.
President Broderick, I'd like to make a motion to completely table.
B2?
Yep.
I will second that motion.
I agree.
I'm sorry, did you hear what you just said?
We're going to table B2 for this evening?
Thank you for your question.
You know, employee spouse costs you $21,000 approximately.
Question, how many years have they been doing this?
Oh.
I would have to think.
You can't table. Well, you could, you could do it for a month. Well, I'll let the lawyers.
You can extend a contract for a month. You have to have someone on this day and then bring it back to the table.
Can we do that?
Sure. So how about I do this? I'll doctor up the resolution. We're going to have a fixed term running from January 4, 2018, through January 31, 2018. So that'll be for just the one month. The Board will revisit this at their public meeting on January 31.
And the reason being is our council told us that we need to have somebody in place at this time to run the school district.
By statute.
By statute.
I have another question on that. If you tell me they're employees of the Board, that money is pensionable?
That's a good question. Yes, it would be.
Yeah. So you're hiring a doctor, chief and a medical inspector at $50,000 and $40,000. You're giving him, or you propose to give him, over $21,000 medical benefits for part-time work, and they're in the pension system. And you wonder why you can never afford a contract for the teachers. How much money are you going to spend for doctors that do part-time work? You could go out and hire a doctor at that price and give them no medical and no pension, and they'd be more than happy to take $50,000 and $40,000 for the limited amount of medical expertise they bring.
I'll tell you what we'll do. I'm going to look and see if we're doing anything that other school districts.
Don't go by other school districts. We don't go by other school districts in a lot of areas when they get paid. Other school districts, we're the lowest-paid hourly employees, my teachers, in, I think, New Jersey. How come we don't go by other school districts when they get 35 and 45 an hour? We pay them 20. That's other school districts. You don't want to follow that rule then, only when it's to your advantage.
Well, this isn't a rule. This isn't something we did this year.
Mr. President, man, one second.
Yes.
Mr. DeAngelo, the statute requires that they appoint these medical professionals. The amount they pay them may be subject to the going rate throughout the state, which it is a good idea to check with other districts, and I think that's what the President's addressing you with right now. They have to hire someone. They don't have a choice in it.
I don't have an objection to them being hired. I have an objection to them being given medical insurance at the cost of $21,000 and pension for a very part-time job. That's what I'm objecting to. If the state says you got to have a chief medical inspector, fine. But that's all they should be getting, and that's plenty for what they do. The Board should reconsider on the medical and certainly not have them in the pension fund. We can't ever settle with the teachers. The last contract the teachers got, 90% of the teachers got $440 a year, and you're giving them $50,000 to do what? Work 10 days? You got to reconsider these things. You can't keep doing it. And how about the rest of the, there's no monies on any of the other things you passed. You didn't, the engineers, the architects, and the loyal firm.
They're all as needed, so we wouldn't know what an amount would be until we use them.
Well, in the budget, you put aside for Aberzese-McDermott, last year, I believe, $225,000. Well, how did you determine that? You made the budget. So you don't know what, how far you can go with them? As you pass this, you hired them for a full year. So you don't, you don't have a retainer limit as you've hired them? So if the firm chalks up $2 million, you're going to pay them?
Oh, I don't think that'll happen.
Well, you never know.
Well.
The point is, you're passing a resolution to hire them for a year in the future, and you can't tell me what the limit is, if there's a retainer or there's a fixed amount that they can go to.
But we're dealing with a situation, we don't know how much we'd have to use a lawyer.
But you, in every resolution you have here, the first resolution, you can't, with the accountant, you can't exceed the...
Well, no, that's not how it reads. We'll be happy to give you the results of the RFP if that would help you at all.
What is the RFP?
We went out, RFP on all of these on December 20, so I could get you the results of all the people that submitted RFPs for each of these categories, if that is what you're asking me.
I'm asking, how much money is this Board willing to spend on these, for these architects and for this law firm? And for the two law firms coming up after this resolution? There has to be some consideration when you pass this resolution. Or you'll get in the same trouble you were in last time with the budget.
Like I said, I have the specifications in the RFPs. I'll let you answer it maybe a little different than me.
Let me start by, just as a matter of history for the benefit of the Boards, with regard to the physicians that were employed by the Board. A number of years back, and Alan, you may remember, I don't recall, but it was quite some time ago, and preceded our current Board Doctor, we went out and we looked at the possibility of paying hourly rates to physicians. And the hourly rates that were proposed by the physicians were astronomical, and that's when we went to salaries. We stayed with salaries. We had had salaries, and someone suggested we pay it by the hour, and the rates that were proposed were very high, and we knew essentially how much work could be done because of the workers' compensation work that's done besides the regular physician work that's done by these. With regard to attorneys, and I am an attorney, so I can answer that, and I think I can answer for the other two firms. It depends, there could be a year where there's very little work, there could be a year where there's a lot of work. And that's why Boards don't agree to a retainer, and that's why law firms, for the most part, don't agree, because you just don't know how much work there's going to be. So if the Board said, well, let's take an average of the last three years, and that's what we're going to pay that law firm, well, if the work is a lot less than the Board paid for services it didn't need, if the work is a lot more than the law firm provided services that is not being paid for. And that's why certain professional services are on an as-needed basis, because it varies from year to year. And that's not unique to Bayonne.
I understand that completely, on an as-needed basis. But there is usually past a limit, where we'll set aside up to $100,000 for the law firm. If we find out we're approaching $100,000, we have to reconvene the Board to see if they want to spend more money. This is an open, what you're telling me, it's wide open?
No, it's not wide open. Each month, the Board passes resolutions approving its expenses for everything, whether it's professional services, whether it's maintenance services, whatever it is, for every contract it has, it's reviewed on a month-to-month basis, so the Board can have an idea where it's heading in its budget. And that's, again, not unique to Bayonne, that's every Board of Education, that's how they do it.
Then can you explain, when I look at the budget last year, it said $225,000 for your firm. Where did they get that number? Is that what was spent?
That's a budgeted number. That's not, that's not a guaranteed number. So the number could be less, it could be more, and what the Board has done in the past, let's look at the county. For instance, in 2016, the Bayonne Board of Education had the second-lowest legal cost in the entire county. And it looks historically what it's spent, and it looks and sees what prospectively do they see coming down the pipe.
What's the budgeted number for this, that period from January 3 to the 4th of next year?
I believe it's $225.
Yeah, but that's all. That's everything.
No, it wasn't last year.
What did you say, last year, fiscal '17?
It was, the last budget I looked at, that was the Aberzese firm. The Chason firm was $100,000 separate.
A budget doesn't have names in it because when the professionals work at will, okay? And the Board can decide to change professionals. So it wouldn't have a firm's name. What it would have is a line item.
Two fast questions, and we'll go on. Do the, do lawyers get medical benefits also from this Board? No. Can I have what you spent on the two law firms for last year, the last complete year?
I'm sure we can.
What was paid out to Aberzese and Chason?
We can get that to you, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing, when you're sort of like something with the medical doctors, and I understand what you're saying, and maybe it's a good point, we're going to look at that, but, you know, I don't want you to think that this is something new that we just brought up this year. I mean, if they've been getting benefits, I'm sure they've been getting benefits for the last 10 years. You know?
You know, you should be able to get contracts at 5%, 6%, 7%, 8%. Right now, I'm at 0. So things change. So maybe you can't afford these benefits.
Maybe you're right.
For someone that's doing part-time work as a doctor, you're paying the optometrist $3.50 a student. You're saying you can't pay them hourly, you're paying them per student. So they're able to do that. I don't think there's a doctor that would turn down $50,000 or $40,000 for what they're required to do. To throw on an extra $21,000, or two people at $42,000, is, I don't know, does the optometrist get medical too?
No.
Can I just ask, what do you think they do? You seem to marginalize, number one, the importance and the amount of work that they do. What do you think they do?
I think that they, the chief medical examiner will deal with the teachers and the students depending on when they're out and when they're sick. The point is, they're not working full-time.
No, that's, you're absolutely right.
They're in one day a week.
That's only, that's only a small part of what they do. They're involved in all leaves of absences. They review it for the Board. They handle our workers' compensation. They offer opinions as to what we should do on things. Are they here all the time? No, they have offices. But they're an integral part. I've had cases with you where they've testified.
I got it, but you're paying them an abominant amount of money to start with. They don't have to get medical, and they certainly don't need to be in the pension system.
Well, that's the law, so we have no control.
No, it's only the law because you're saying they're employees. If they were consultants, brought in as consultants to do medical, you wouldn't have to do that.
And the problem is, we would then pay them hourly.
Excuse me, Bob.
Under the statute, they have to be hired as employees, not consultants, not professionals of any other sort.
Under the statute, do they have to be given medical?
It says that the Board will determine their pay. It doesn't say anything about medical.
Okay. So you don't have to give them medical, and you can determine their pay. So what you're paying them now is the $48,000 plus 21, if that's the coverage they're getting.
We are tabling that, and we will take a look. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, we are on B7. B7 is legal services, general. The firm is Chason, Lamparello, Malin, Capuzzo, January 4, 2018, to and including January 3, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I'll second.
On a motion and second on Resolution V7. Trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velato. Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
My final Resolution B8. This is for legal services. This is a bond counsel. McManigan, Scotland, and Baumann, January 4, 2018, to and including January 3, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
That concludes our resolutions for this evening. Mr. President, I do have a few cards from the audience. Why don't we start out with Mr. Barry Dugan, 796 Avenue A. I remind our speakers that we have a three-minute limit. I will let you know when you're at two minutes.
Good evening.
How are you, Mr. Dugan?
I've listened to a lot of comments on the treatment that was afforded Dr. Patricia McGeehan and business administrator Leo Smith. It's a shame that this board has done nothing to recognize that some form of apology needs to come, not from the new members, but from the old members, for what they put those two people through for an entire year, particularly at the December 19 meeting, when it was brought out the fact that Dr. McGeehan and Leo Smith notified the board of what the problem was. That went on for a whole year, the public didn't know what the problem was, it took the auditors eight months to find out what the problem was, and the problem was, there wasn't a problem. But as Dr. McGeehan indicated, she was harassed by the public on a regular basis because nobody stood behind her. Forty-eight years of service, and no one on this board stood behind her. What a treatment to afford to an employee. I'm sure if you did it to a teacher, Allen would be up here raising hell. But because you're an administrator, you're allowed to be walked over? I think something needs to be done in that regard. That's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Next up, Mr. Joe Wyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, North Plainfield, New Jersey.
Well, first, I'd like to congratulate the board on their new board, and then I'd like to welcome the new board members. And I'd also like to offer my profound condolences, because you are going to be faced with a very monumental decision coming up pretty soon that will affect this school district for perhaps a generation. And I don't think you have sufficient information to make that judgment. After Dr. McGeehan spoke at the last board meeting, I started thinking very carefully about the difference between Dr. McGeehan and Dr. Wanko. And I came to the conclusion, after I also read another very interesting book, that there is a fundamental difference between their philosophies and how they run the school board, and it has, how they run the school district, and it has a profound difference in the outcome of this school district as it goes forward. If you want to, if you want to do all the things that Mr. Broderick just talked about, which are very important and everybody supports it, you can't do that unless you really understand the differences between Dr. McGeehan's administration and Dr. Wanko's administration. And Dr. Wanko's administration is going to end. So you now must make a very serious decision. So in the next meeting, I'm going to outline what that difference is and give you that information, because I fear if you don't have that information, you're going to make the wrong decision. And I also think that even if I give you that information and it's crystal clear what you should do, you probably won't do that either. But at least my conscience will be clear that I gave you the information that you needed to make a really good decision. And so I'm going to request not three minutes, but like 15 or 20 minutes the next meeting, because you gave the, Dr. McGeehan, 20 minutes the last board meeting. Now, I said, well, wait a minute, why didn't I get 20 minutes if I wanted to? And Mr. Munoz said, well, it was because of the respect for the Dr. McGeehan. And I, I'm not arguing that you shouldn't give her 20 minutes, but I'm saying I do respect too, because I were, you know, I realized that I did not work for the same district that Dr. McGeehan supervised. Okay? She was the, she was the chief operating officer of a district that I wasn't in, because the way she describes it is not what I experienced, and not what most people experience. And they're terrified, they were terrified to say anything. That's horrible. That you should have a school district in which people are afraid is absolutely counter to anything in education. Education should be an experience of experimentation and not fear and punishment, that you don't agree with somebody. So I'm going to ask for that, I won't do it now, but I'll ask for that time. And folks, if you don't give it to me, there would be people that would be interested in what I have to say. I'm trying to give you that information so that you can control it and do with it what you wish. If I go outside with this, you don't have, you lose control of it, and you don't know what's going to happen. And I don't know either.
Joe Wyatt, thank you so much for your comments this evening. We look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Last card that I have is Mr. Dave Solari, 16 Colonial Drive. There are no other cards from the audience? Okay. Dave, you're our last speaker.
Good evening, trustees, and congratulations to the new members, Mr. Alonso. I come here today to talk about two hockey coaches that are being punished by the school board, and I just want to bring it up.
I don't know if we're allowed to speak about them.
With all respect, I don't want to cut you off, but you can't really discuss personnel matters with the board.
I'm not, I'm just bringing up what I hear, and that's it. How is it a personnel matter when you already brought it out to the public last month's meeting?
We didn't bring it out to the public.
Didn't you, didn't you implement their pays?
But that's...
Mr. Solari? Yes or no?
That's not before you discuss with anyone.
With all due respect to you, it's impossible for any one of us up here to speak about an individual that's, one, under investigation, and/or, two, that's personnel, it's confidential, it's not, we're not allowed to discuss it, even in general with you. This has been all out in the paper already. Is that correct or no?
We can't, we can't.
We cannot discuss it, we can't. But can I just voice my opinion to all this?
Very generally.
All right, well, you think I'm out of the loop, then just...
The lawyer will stop his...
There's general terms, you can voice your opinion.
General terms. Be careful.
Okay. Well, going back two years ago, all right, the hockey coaches went to the A.D. All right? We're not going to say, we can't say names, or can we say names?
No.
Okay. He went to the, they went to the A.D. The A.D. decided to cover it all up and said, take them out for a drink and discuss it all later on.
I think you're getting into...
Am I?
Yeah, we got it. I know. Well, why don't you explain to him what he's not allowed to...
You just can't, you shouldn't start discussing specific facts about events that occurred, because the board's not here to hear that, that's not... If you have an opinion on mistreatment of something, you can just say it was treated unfairly, and that's, you know, that's the extent of it.
Plus, to protect, and it's, you know, it's in the script and the agenda, to protect yourself, you have to be careful just how far you go.
Well, then, you know, then, when would this, when would this start being a good time to discuss all this? When is this matter going to come out to the public before any time soon?
It may never, but right now, it's a pending matter, so it certainly, at this point, it's not a good time to be discussing it.
All right. So, the two individuals being punished, though, well, yes or no?
The board can't answer that question, it's a personnel matter.
It's still under investigation.
So, so what you're trying to say is you're not going to answer it at all?
No, no, no.
Mr. DeAngelo, last month, came out and discussed a whole bunch of stuff.
No, no, it's still under investigation, that's why the board cannot comment on it.
But these are two teachers that you guys are stopping their increments, is that correct? Yes or no?
They're not going to discuss, the conversation's over. With all due respect, they can't. You're going to get them in trouble, and I'm not going to let them speak on it.
All right, I'll let Mr. DeAngelo take over. Again, it's... He's asking you if you took their increment. You passed that with a resolution last board. I got copies of it.
I understand, but that's not what he's...
That's what I'm discussing. That's what he just asked.
He asked if they were being punished.
Yes. Are they being punished, yes or no? You took the increments away from them.
We're not going to, they're not going to answer the question of whether they're being punished or not, it's a personnel matter.
All right, so, here, let me just take, all right, not being punished, did you put in, you passed the thing last month about the increments, right? That they're not going to be going to the next stage of their salary, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct? Yes or no? Who's going to answer this? Somebody got to answer this.
Attorney's answering.
The attorney's answering.
That's in the record.
So that's, that's a definite?
It's in the record.
Okay, now, why did that happen?
That will not be answered.
How can you not answer it?
It's a personnel matter, it can't be discussed.
But you just passed it to say that you can't...
It's not going to be answered, that's it. I can talk to you about it privately, not the facts, but why, and the specifics of the law, in terms of why it can't be answered, but it's a personnel matter, and they cannot violate the rights of the personnel here.
Yeah, I would like to speak to you after this, you know, just to see, because then I might have to come back next month, maybe, and see what we could do here. But, but to pass the thing and not know, does this board know what went on?
Yes.
Does this board here know what went on? Did anybody talk to these individuals? You can't say yes, because you weren't even in yet, as a trustee.
There's several things, and I'm going to let the attorney handle this before we wind up in trouble, but let me say this.
All right, I'll, I'll talk to the attorney afterwards.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because you run the district.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, we'll let Mr. Alonso.
Trustee Alonso, if you'd like something to say?
Oh, thank you so much.
Mike, you got to talk to the microphone trustee. Try and do it under three minutes, please.
That three-minute little pause to me. Mr. Chin, I'd like to take a few minutes, hopefully more than three, to say a few words at this time. I am greatly honored to be here today at my inaugural session on this fully-elected school board. I'm deeply grateful to the voters of Bayonne for giving me the opportunity to serve both our city and our school system. I'm truly honored to be on this distinguished elected board, and I pledge to carry out my duties to the best of my ability, and always putting the interests of the taxpayers, the students, the parents, and the whole agitational community of Bayonne. I'd also like to thank everyone who has been so generous with their time, their advice, their information in welcoming me to this new public position. I appreciate the kindness and thoughtfulness that was shown to me by our superintendent, the staff, as well as President Broderick, and all other seven trustees. As I said, I embark on this new public position, and being a member of the Bayonne School Board, it is indeed a public position. We must all serve the public, and we must all answer to the public. During the last few years, the Bayonne Board of Education has been plagued by some financial problems and fiscal irregularities. And the people and the taxpayers, they still haven't been given any real answers, hard, true facts, as to how and why this whole deficit debacle came about. And we owe it to the people, to those who pay the bills, to find out the reasons once and for all, so we, as a district, can put this scandal behind us, take corrective actions that are necessary, and move forward onto better days. Accordingly, in the name of integrity, for the people of Bayonne, and in the spirit of transparency, I move that this board passes a resolution that we put out a bid to seek an independent counsel for a contract to conduct a full investigation of any wrongdoing, included but not limited to misrepresentations, negligence, misconduct, misbehavior by or any staff administrator related to the state audit that was conducted from July 1st, 2015, to June 30th, 2016, that was released on November 14th, 2017, and to anything that was included in the preparation of such budget. Mr. President, here's a copy of my motion. I also have many other copies, if anybody else would like one, I will hand them out, actually.
Well, I'll do whatever the board wants.
I'd like to make a statement. Mr. Dugan, I did apologize to Dr. McGeehan publicly at the last meeting, and multiple times in between, and I actually did support her and Mr. Smith and Central Office, and I'd like to go to the heart of the matter of the irregularity. I won't mention how severely underfunded we've been for a decade. I will mention, however, that in one specific instance over a, and I'm going to ask Mr. Clark, who I never let him finish, the first time I brought it up, but I'm going to let him address it, if he would. The contract before this, the, basically turned out to be a five-year contract, I wish I had my cell phone, because I could show you the line item, budgeted 12 million, paid out 20 million. It was a year in a contract that didn't exist previously to a Labor Day weekend, was it? And then, at it over a weekend, when the city was still allowed to negotiate and intervene, and it was that contract that was a big part of what went wrong. And that person's name, I will say, because I'll probably be sued tomorrow, but Mr. Joe DiMarco had that conversation, and coerced others to go along with it. But that was a big part of what went wrong. Nobody stole anything. The other thing is, preempting all of this was the fact that money was taken from the MUA, 11.8 million, I'm guessing, I'm not quite sure. They came to the Board of Ed, say, 11.3 million, they came to the Board of Ed and said they owed them 11.3 million, or vice versa, but those are the two numbers, 11.3 and 11.8. In any case, that was not true. The rod grants, I spoke to you when we were on finance and during closed session, those monies, the city used to have to budget in our behalf, our behalf, I wasn't sitting here, but I am a trustee now. They would have to get, when we got reimbursed, they got reimbursed to pay down the bond debt. So, again, there's, just to short of it, there were no irregularities, other than the accountant who was here not posting things in appropriate places. There is a deficit, and the prior accountants, apparently in two years in a row, warned those then-trustees that there was going to be a problem, because they weren't raising taxes to make up the money that they needed, which they weren't getting back from tax dollars already paid to the state in form of school aid. So that's the nutshell, I'll be happy to have more details available when you need them, and I'll show you the line item on my cell phone. Mr. Clark, would you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I would add is that we funded the settlement through surplus, which was nonrecurring revenue.
Which is the other part of that problem.
Well, yeah, I do have a motion on the floor, but I mean, I totally understand if nobody agrees with me and wants to second it, to open the discussion about whether we need an independent counsel to conduct an investigation about what happened. So it's up to you eight to decide whether somebody stands with me on this, or I'm the only one that's looking out for the taxpayers and the people of Bayonne.
That's not the truth. I can't believe we're having this kind, this discussion is being had before we even do anything. You wanted to know something, and I told you.
If I could interject here, one of the things is that after the last...
We're having a discussion about a motion without having a second, been opening it. Point of order.
Point of order first.
Okay.
We, we do have bylaws and policies that the board follows. I wish I knew them off the top of my head, but I don't, so I went to get it. Bylaw 0164, conduct of board meetings, I'll skip to the last paragraph, presentation of resolutions. This is our policy. No resolution is to be offered at any public meeting by any member of the board unless said resolution is first presented to members of the board at a public workshop of the board, or at a closed meeting of the board as provided by law. So unfortunately, you have every right to present the resolution, but not at this exact time. And that is due to our policy and bylaws, which if it's to be changed, needs to be amended.
Hand.
Also, I'd like to just say that, in regards to some of the speakers that came up, that we, after the last meeting, I actually took the time and we, I wrote down what pretty much I thought our findings were, and I actually sent it to the, I put on a website, if you wanted to look at that, but I also sent it to the Community News and to the Jersey Journal. I don't believe either one put it in yet, because I haven't seen it. If it was there, then I apologize, but I haven't seen it. What I could possibly do is try to resend it, if that's the case, and try to give what the findings that we found were, as far as what we know. But that's the best I could do at this moment, and if there's any additional information as to what our findings were, that would be another story. One of the findings was basically that over one point of time, over like a four-year period, and using a conservative number, that what was budgeted and what was spent was in a, was a difference between at least 18 million dollars. Now, that, that's a lot of money. Now, most of that, I'm sure, did come out of fund balance, but that fund balance only lasts so long. Just like if you go to your bank account, and you keep pulling money out of your bank account, because, you know, every month, I'm not meeting the bills, so I take, sooner or later, it's not there. And that's basically what happened to us. It got to the point where it just wasn't there, you know? So, understanding nothing was done criminal, or as far as people taking or anything like that, it was just a matter of spending when we shouldn't have spent. And, like I said, I'll try to get that back out again if that didn't reach the paper, so that most people could at least hear something about it. And after that, if people have other questions, I'd be glad to listen and try to answer those also. So, thank you.
So, Mr. President, what I will do is I'll, I'll take Mr. Alonso's resolution, and I'll put it into our forum. I'll have it ready for the committee meetings for this month, and then have it on the agenda for the 31st, for the open workshop for the 31st, and follow the policy, okay? Mr. DeAngelo?
I actually thought, when that audit was over and it was presented, we would move past this, but it doesn't seem like that's ever going to happen. And it does seem like a lot of things are never discussed. So what I would want to mention are two things. The accountant that you said was responsible for these errors came from Hoboken, if I'm not mistaken, before he worked here. And he was interviewed by somebody. I understand that when he left Hobo, I understand, I can't substantiate it, but he left under a cloud, there were problems with the finances in Hoboken. Yet we interviewed him, and we hired him. Now, what's even worse, he resigned on a particular day, I think it was a Friday, and he started in West New York Board of Education as their accountant. Did anybody on this board think it might be a good idea to alert the West New York Board, if this is the man you believe caused all these problems? Or is it okay that if it happens in West New York, it's okay, because it's not Bayonne? That's the first problem, nobody discussed. The second problem, and I should have said it last week, but I just wanted him to go, when Teddy was giving his speech about we're the most underfunded district in the state for so many years, I've heard it, nobody, he didn't mention that the guy that appointed him to this board put zero in the budget for three years out of five, and that made you underfunded. But nobody mentions that, because that's a local man. That's where your problem came from. You had three zeros in a row, and the board didn't scream and yell that they were getting zero. How do you go forward from year to year with no increase, not a dollar, on 135 million? It's impossible. So if anybody, and I'm not an accountant, but I know things go up every year.
But you've agreed -- you agreed three out of five years to take that money, the board. If you were, I know, you weren't sitting here, but you want to know where the problem is and how do we get to the bottom? Well, you can't do that.
I tried to.
But to keep blaming the state for underfunding us, at least we know they're underfunding us, you have to make a budget that you can live within. When the city underfunds you and gives you zero for three years out of five, you have no hope. That's how you got into the problem.
Well, that was part of the problem.
That was part of the problem.
Correct.
That's how you got into it.
Correct.
So you have to be aware of that going forward.
We are.
What did you do at the last -- at the last --
We did raise taxes, unfortunately, last time.
5.8% or something. Why? Because you were in the hole.
Correct.
Right. So you had to go and get that money.
Correct.
Now, that being said, when you raised it 5.8% on your last budget, right? You did that because you had to balance the budget. Agreed? Isn't that true? Okay.
To help balance it, certainly.
Well, you balanced it.
That wasn't the only thing.
Well, you didn't run it as a deficit going forward.
We cut expenses.
Right. But when you passed that budget and raised the local tax levy by 5.8%, it was balanced. Isn't that correct, Mr. Ryan?
Is that correct? That's correct.
That's correct. Just follow this and I'm done. Since it was balanced, and it was the spring budget for this school year that we're in now, from July 1 through August 31st, and the state gave you special additional funding of $2.8 million.
But don't forget that.
Didn't you get that over the summer?
But that 2.8 was a --
2.3.
Three?
It was going to be a book deal that we were going to take to balance it that we didn't have to because of the 2.8. So it wasn't money that -- it was an additional 2.8. We already figured in, to be able to balance the budget, that we were going to have to do a book deal for somewhere like 3.2 million.
And maybe you would have had to do the book deal also in order to settle the contract with the teachers.
Well, we take the book deal, then we're paying the interest of like 800,000 a year also, which wouldn't help anybody.
How would it be 800,000?
Well, we have to pay back that loan.
Right. Not interest.
Just that the state gave us the money, the other people didn't give us the money with interest is what I'm saying.
Somebody on this board or the board collectively better get their numbers straightened out because it's not working.
We were taking the four-year contract when it was still on the table and everybody was sweating bullets up here. You wouldn't have that problem, right?
I did take it.
Guys, we're not going to negotiate here.
I took four. I signed it. I have -- I --
Folks, we're not going to negotiate in public, folks.
Wait a second. Mr. Ryan, we took -- we signed a tentative deal for four years.
Excuse me. We are not negotiating in public.
I'm not negotiating. I'm answering this question.
We are not negotiating in public.
You said I turned it down. Here's the labor attorney. You're paying him a quarter of a million. Did I sign a tentative agreement for four years?
No, we didn't sign a memorandum of agreement.
A tentative agreement, I said.
We did not sign a memorandum of agreement.
I know that. We signed a tentative agreement for four years because the board wouldn't sign it.
Don't try to change what the trustee said. He pointed out.
You're lying. You're a liar. You're a liar.
All right. Alan, enough. That's it. Your time is up.
Motion to adjourn, please.
And there was a motion to adjourn the meeting by trustee Finerty. There's a second by trustee Desmond. On that motion and second to adjourn the public meeting, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick. It is 8:46. Trustees, we're back inside.